All right, at 6:30, I'd like to call the meeting of the September 18, 2024, Planning Board to session. To begin, let's start by rising and doing a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have four items on the agenda this evening. One is a matter of old business, and we have three matters of new business, and then some other business at the end for those who find those things very exciting. My name is Dan Holback. I'm acting chair tonight because Amy Hybel has COVID. So she obviously was not going to be here to spread the well. But I'd like to have the members of the board come by and introduce themselves.
Howard Leviti on Oars Island.
Lori Rice, Great Island.
Courtney Snellings.
Ben Gillian, Cundy's Harbor.
Matthew James, Town Planner.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum. So let's go right into old business. This is a carryover. Randall and Kathleen Butler and Cameron Johnson, map 66 lot 6, consideration of the board's exercising jurisdiction for the review of an application to reconstruct a nonconforming structure. This is a matter which was continued from the prior meeting. So perhaps we can ask the town planner if you could give us an update on what you've learned since the last meeting.
Yes, so we have conducted a sidewalk, which I did mention at the last meeting, with the owner and applicant and the shoreland zoning officer for our area, Jeff Kalnich from the DEP. During that sidewalk, Jeff Kalnich identified a potential location for the structure to be relocated to, and we instructed the applicant to come back with some more information regarding whether that location was feasible. After some deliberation and reaching back out to the state, I was able to secure a statement from Jeff regarding the DEP's opinion on the application and how to interpret Chapter 1000 and our ordinance by proxy. There was some confusion about exactly how to utilize greatest practical extent and if there was to be a location that the structure could be relocated to, if greatest practical extent would be considered. And in the opinion of the DEP, we are to enforce the ordinance and Chapter 1000 by relocating the structure to a available area. The applicant is here tonight. I don't know if he has anything further to say on the matter.
Bless you.
Good evening. Randy Butler, owner. A couple of things. I did walk with the gentleman around the property. There is a fairly large, flat, open space that Jeff did look at and suggested that that be a potential location for the relocation of the boathouse. At that time, I mentioned that that had been designated at one point as a septic system for a structure that had not been at that point built, has not been. And in fact, he refers to that information in his letter about the cleared parcel does not compromise the location of the existing septic system or proposed future systems. And that area was not identified as locations for septic system until it was identified as a potential location for the boathouse. Perhaps my error in not mentioning that. However, I do have a subsurface wastewater disposal system application completed, approved by the, at that point in time, senior state soil scientist certified from 2002. By that same letter that he had brought, that first portion, the review of the greatest practical extent determining the location of the reconstructed structure, if there's a location beyond the setback per the criteria, then it cannot be relocated within the setback. But that criteria of greatest practical extent specifically excludes areas that can be used as septic. One thing that was perhaps not made clear, the same soil scientist has done an evaluation of the property, and his recommendation is that boathouse not be moved, that it is the least, it is the only place on the property that will not increase damage to the natural resource. Questions?
Members of the board?
Kind of creates a quagmire.
I have no questions. I mean, I think that's clear from the documents. I think we have to deal with it. There's no good answer. It satisfies everybody.
Have you submitted that report to the town, the one that you just quoted?
The answer is, I believe so. I do not know if it went through, because I believe it would have gone too mad. And if it hasn't, I'm afraid I, still using Spectrum, and I'm not having very much luck with them. I have found things that have not gone. I have found things I have not received for days on end. So it's quite possible that it did not get to. Be that the case, I will be more than happy. Or he has volunteered that he will make himself available to answer any of your questions or to go through that status.
That ring of L to you?
Not off the top of my head, no. I can't say that with any certainty.
Yeah, this is, unfortunately, that is new information to us. And, you know, unfortunately, I was not at the last meeting, so I didn't hear the discussion aside from just reading the minutes. The question, there are a couple of questions, one of which is the one of whether the term reasonably...
The greatest practical extent.
Greatest practical extent actually applies here, or whether it is perhaps not the most artfully written set of ordinance as we've seen. The question is whether that applies.
On that point, well, maybe we ought to finish the public hearing and then get into our own thoughts about this.
Are there other...
Well, I believe, Howard, you had, you brought up the original concern of whether you actually had the right, because of that section of 10322 that says that it must be moved back, there was question whether greatest practical extent came into that.
We'll get into it then.
And according to Jeff, it does. The letter that he wrote specifically says it does.
Well, I think the issue is that there's one sentence that we highlight in our findings that basically says, if you can't, if you could relocate it outside the setback area, you have to.
Right. And he clarifies that.
It is not permissible. It is clear, and it doesn't give us any language about whether or not it's reasonable to do that. So what we had asked the planner to do was to go to either our attorney or the state, and he has, for clarification of that. And I think what the gentleman from the DEP is saying is that we look at it exactly like we said we were going to look at it, but there's no clear, it's not a black and white thing. You have to have a reasonableness standard in there. I think that's what he's saying to us, and I agree with that. That, so for example, with respect to the question of the one that we just did on Bailey Island, there was no way you could, even though there was plenty of land outside the area, it was not suitable for building another foundation. So you had to add the word reasonableness to that determination, because you couldn't build it. So the question that comes to you, I think, is, is there another location that you can do it? Now, you may, you would come in, and you have come in, and said, well, if we cut down some trees, we could probably do it. The DEP fellow, but that's dangerous in your estimation, because that increases the likelihood in a strong wind that other trees would get blown down.
You've lived here long enough to have seen enough of that.
No, I understand that. But every hill and harsal has that same issue.
Yes, they do.
And people build on the hillsides all over the place. I think the DEP fellow responded to that in the last sentence of the first paragraph, when he says, "There may be other areas on the parcel where the boathouse could be relocated, albeit with more vegetation removal." The cleared area is a better location, I think is what he's saying, because there's minimal vegetation removal required, and it could be done in compliance with vegetation removal standards and will result in minimum, minimal tree removal compared to the other locations. So it's clear that he thinks we ought to tell you that there is at least one site on the property. Our job tonight is to make a determination whether we make that determination in the future, or we remove jurisdiction and send it back to codes with an instruction if we choose to do that. That's all we get to do tonight.
Would the soil scientist's testimony and explanation of this help clarify?
I think it's something that we have to weigh, that whoever makes that determination, if we take jurisdiction, we would have to weigh that. And if we send it back to codes, Tim would have to do that, make a determination whether it's the greater good on this thing. It's not a clear black and white. And I, listen, I think everybody that's seen your site understands that that's been there for a long, long time in your family.
As I look around, I suspect...
And it's not really good for us to sit here, and not pleasant for us to sit here and tell you you have to move it. But our job, and Tim's job, is to enforce the ordinance and the state statute for shoreline zone. We don't have a whole lot of leeway.
Can you get that information to us? I think, I, for one, am feeling like I don't have everything to hand. This is new information, and I would feel better if I saw something. What do the rest of you think?
The other thing I wanted to just say was, it would be, you're speaking, we don't have formal rules of evidence in a public hearing. So you can tell us what someone said to you, but the best evidence of that would be a letter from that person or having him here to testify and tell us why he thinks, if this gentleman, I think David...
Mr. Oak, yes.
Is the expert on soils and, you know, keeping the shoreline safe, then we certainly would want to listen to that, but he's not here tonight. So we can only act on the testimony that we have.
It won't make any difference, but I think for your information, you should know that Mr. Oak is who Mr. Kalnich calls when they need soils tests done.
Again, that's...
Sure, but that is the level of his expertise.
I believe you implicitly.
So a letter from him stating his reasons for, would be enough?
Depending on whether we take jurisdiction or we do not take jurisdiction, I think that's helpful for either of the people that have...
That's what I was wondering, is whether it goes to the planning board or to the code enforcement.
We haven't made that determination yet.
But the letter would be helpful either way.
Yes.
I think that, I think the, in every one of these public hearings, it's sort of the applicant's job to prove the case, and that would be helpful.
That makes it difficult, doesn't it? No, on you and the applicant, though, it potentially makes it adversarial.
This isn't an adversarial thing. It's a situation, we're trying to help the people that live in the town as much as we can. This is a state statute that we then have to apply through our own ordinance. It's not like we have a whole lot of choice. Shoreland zoning was the first zoning in Maine, and it's been around for a lot of years. And our job is to apply it.
I guess a prior question is whether, this is a situation where the exception actually allows for weighing the benefits of keeping it here or moving it.
I'm convinced from what the gentleman from the DEP said, that you have to read that as a, I think you would have had to be reasonable anyway in that sense. I think you just have to be, and I think that's the way we've always done it.
Okay. Are there, before entertaining any other questions from the board, is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this?
Chris Hatch, a mediate of butter to the Butler's property. And I guess I feel like I'm taking the role of sort of speaking for the classic boathouse by the shore. And you folks have to weigh legality and whatnot, just viewing it somewhat from, I guess, an aesthetic perspective and whatnot. It's one of those, appreciates the Maine coast. I've got more pictures in my phone of boathouses, fish houses along the shore than any other structures. Now, you have to weigh and decide as you much, as you must, but I hope you end up with a Butler boathouse by the shore, not tucked up in the woods.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Then I guess the question is whether we wish to take jurisdiction of this or whether we want to turn it over to codes.
I would like to move that we do not take jurisdiction and we remand to code enforcement officer with the request that if, that the original application should be denied, but that if it can be relocated, it should, it would be preferable to relocate it wherever on the property the code officer determines is best for the environment. I would also like to state that if the code officer determines that it can't be relocated, he should at least drop us a line. Let us know. That would be my motion.
Glad I don't have to repeat it.
Oh, I know, I can probably repeat it.
That's why we have it recorded. Is there, is there support for that motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I kind of have to agree with what Mr. Hatch was saying. Like, as somebody who has lived in Cundy's Harbor, there's other factors at play here. That boathouse has been there for generations. That boathouse has been an navigational landmark for commercial fishermen in the fog for generations coming into Ridley Cove and stuff like that. And I think, like, the gentleman from the DEP said that it's on a case-by-case basis, and I think we have to take the word reasonable into account here. And I don't think, based on the letter we have from Mr. Rourke here, or who is this from that I recently spoke with?
This was provided to us by the applicant.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, if we could, I'd prefer to table it pending the, more information that we, he can get that letter from Mr. Rourke in the wastewater disposals application he was talking about and stuff like that. I hate to table it and make you come back again, but...
I don't know if we can. What's the timeframe? What's the time limit? We have X number of days in order to...
Yeah, is it 90?
I think we have 100 days. I don't know.
So the ordinance...
Where's Margaret?
The ordinance calls for 40 days.
40 days.
From the, and that 40-day period starts when public notice goes out.
Right, so we've already tabled this once.
Right. And I, in the future, I don't know if we, or if the board is able to table these types of applications, because that will effectively automatically hit that 40-day period.
So I think we have to act on it, unfortunately. I mean, one way or the other. It would have been nice to have all of the evidence, the testimony.
And Matt, going back to your point, which I can really appreciate, because I vote, and I know what you mean by having, you know, those landmarks to really nail in on, but would that make a difference on if we take jurisdiction or remand it to codes?
No, I just wanted to get it out there on the public record, was all. So the way it was made aware was anything before we voted, and I figured that was my chance.
So if there, if we remand it to codes, even with your precatory language...
He can do whatever he wants.
He can do whatever he wants. It's the responsibility, then, of codes to make the final determination. And I think by putting it over there, we're suggesting that codes is probably better able to determine the reasonableness or not than we are, because they deal with it all the time. Is that fair assessment?
Yeah. Otherwise, we'd have to just take jurisdiction all the time.
That's right.
And then ultimately do whatever has to be done. The planning board really is only, probably should only take jurisdiction in an exceptional case in these type of situations.
Okay. Any further comments? If it's been moved in second, a call for a vote on remanding it to codes with...
With instructions.
With the other instructions, all in favor?
Sorry, Tim.
Motion is unanimous. Okay. Get to talk to code enforcement. And thank you. This is, this is one of those areas that doesn't have an easy answer. And so we appreciate all the work that you have done in preparing for this and giving us an opportunity to look at something that I'm sure we'll see again in the future. All right, let's move on to new business. Malcolm Henry Family Trust, map 42, lots 47 and 48, and 48-1, subdivision amendment, consideration of an application to dissolve one lot within the Narrows Landing subdivision.
I'll start by saying I do think we need to make Matt a voting member tonight.
Yes. You have to elevate him to a...
Okay.
Just a ghost.
I'm sorry, you just, you felt like a voter.
I get just a little.
In the absence of our regular members, Matt Gilli will be a voting member retroactively for all purposes of this meeting. All right? Okay, Mr. Planner?
Okay, moving on to the Narrows Lane subdivision then. This application, let me just get my information here, is to eliminate the lot, one lot of a subdivision, and modify the lot line of another lot in a subdivision to create three lots out of four. The purpose of doing so is to gain access to a lot that at one point had a right-of-way and no longer does. They'll be extending the lot lines to Downey Point Road so that a driveway can be put in for access. The three lots that are a result of this contain the previous subdivided lots from the Narrows Lane subdivision, and that portion of the lot is under the planning board's review. So Lot B will be displayed on the plan, but Lot B is not under direct review by the board, and it is not required to follow the same standards as the subdivided lots. And that is also true for the existing portion of Lot A that was not part of the subdivided lots, and the existing portion of Lot C that was not part of the subdivided lots. It's a bit of a confusing one, which we have learned through the sidewalk and following questions, but I think, are the applicants here today for this one? Yes, so they might have some more to say about this than I do. Or not? If you'd like to.
My name is Mark Henry. Malcolm Henry's son. Were there questions about the proposal?
We didn't know whether you might have something you wanted to say in addition to our...
Your purpose in doing this?
Purpose is to basically make a sellable lot out of, a larger sellable lot out of what was pretty difficult to market. The left side, I can't remember the numbers, but the left-sided waterfront lot was basically on a cliff and had no real access to the water. And by moving a lot line into the lot next door, it allows access to the waterfront as opposed to trying to make stairs down a cliff.
Okay, thank you.
Also, if I can add, it was too keen that this...
You need to...
You need, because it's recorded, that's the issue. We can hear you, but she can't hear you in the back.
So the original intent was to, it was basically landlocked. So the original intent was to extend the lot line from the waterfront back to Downey Point. That lot line was then amended in order to provide an area of waterfront that somebody could actually walk down. So it was really twofold, originally back to Downey Point and then moved northerly, which made the nonconforming lot non-buildable, and that is going to be amended to the parcel that is at the end of Moose Alley. Does that make sense?
Yes, although I don't, Moose Alley isn't on the map, but somebody probably knows where it is. Where is it?
It is.
Thank you, so it is. I have my magnifying glass. See it now, thank you.
I had a couple of questions. From what we have, what you've given us, I can't tell where on the new large lot is the buildable area. I don't know where you would, where the site of the dwelling house projected would be, because you had two there. You had the ability to put two, because it was two lots, and now it's one big lot. That would be first question, where the location of the dwelling would be, because that's something that we look at in a subdivision. And the second is, how does that lot, where's the road in gonna be?
Well, we're not building on it.
You're not building on it.
No.
Someone else will.
No. Someone else is, and that individual has come to the town and met with the building department and apparently... Are you the building department?
It was either Margaret or myself.
Okay.
I know this has been up for discussion a number of times.
Okay. They told us they identified, had a soils person out there identified a building site, a septic area, and the driveway will go out to Downey Point. And they, I mean, we don't have insight into this individual's...
The process.
Right.
Oh, okay. I understand. You're just selling the lot.
We're selling the lot. So his interest, he did his due diligence and is satisfied with what the soils expert and the building department here told him. I have a rough idea, but I couldn't swear to it. So we just look at the lot combinations.
Not necessarily. I mean, that's, I'll ask the planner that question. The, there are submission requirements for a lot line amendment in our ordinance. And there's, I don't know, eight, ten, twelve requirements. We, we got a pretty bare bones application. We really never even walked on this land because we didn't know exactly where it was when we went to the sidewalk. But I, I can't, I do, are we required to, I mean, we have to look at finding, making, finding of facts that the approval standards are met. And one of those approvals standards involves where the houses are gonna be, and the other is the, the traffic patterns. They're both in the approval standards in one place or another. I think we have, those are the two major ones that I thought had any applicability to this, to the application.
Yeah, 'cause you're right, they would have to show where the billable lots are.
Yeah, and the drive, and I realize that that's not something that you have, may have knowledge of, but somebody has that's gonna buy this lot. They want, they need subdivision approval before you can sell it to them, I assume.
Correct. Don't we have an idea where the road would be?
I guess what I was saying, Matt, is I don't know if this application is complete.
My understanding is that, uh, because the portion of the lot that would be, uh, that has frontage on Downey Point is not part of the subdivision, that is not required to be shown on the map. So the, the subdivision itself ends where the previous lot line ends, midway through Lot C.
Well, that's, that's the other thing we don't have, is we don't have the subdivision map. We don't have the original subdivision filing, which would have told us that. I don't know where the subdivision is. It has to, if, if it doesn't touch Downey Road, then how does it, how do we have jurisdiction over lot combination?
I thought the road was going to be where the two lots come together, because the border is there now.
Which two lots?
By which name? Or which, I would say Lot B and Lot C.
Okay, well, so that is, that is part of the original subdivision, or it isn't? B and C?
So if you look at the, um, the tax map reduction that was provided as part of the application, um, you can see that there are circled numbers, um, on Lot forty-eight and forty-seven as one and two. Those were the original two lots in the subdivision and those continue down, um, uh, south of Narrows Lane, uh, below the new Lot C.
So forty-seven, forty-eight dash one are, which are being combined, basically, and a part of forty-seven is going to a different subdivision?
No, a part of Lot forty-eight is going to Lot forty-seven and a portion of Lot forty-eight dash one is going to Lot forty-seven.
Okay. So what you're saying is Lot A was not part of the subdivision, or it was?
Lot A, uh, only, uh, so Lot A was not part of the subdivision. Lot forty-eight, which you can see on the tax map reduction, was part of the subdivision. And now part of that lot is joining with, to become Lot A.
Okay, well, but that, that what is now Lot C, a big lot, has to have access to Downey Point Road, right?
Yes.
That's, that's part of the subdivision that we're talking about, Lot C.
Lot, well, Lot forty-eight dash one was never part of the subdivision. And, uh, the description of the access is in general note, uh, in the general notes of the Owen Haskell, Inc., site plan. General Note seven states that, uh, access would be made from Downey Point Road, directly through the site.
Where are you reading this?
It's in the, uh, if you look at the Owen Haskell site plan, there are the plan references and general notes on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
Note seven describes where the access will be for the lot. So the curb cut for access will not be on any previous subdivision land, pardon, not on land, part of the Narrows Lane subdivision.
No, I think we understood that. But it, but it goes out to, the only access then it would have would be the Downey Point Line. So that's part of our jurisdiction in approving this, to know that, that it meets the standards of access roads.
What do you mean, Howard?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Sorry.
Isn't that access to Downey Point?
It, it, it's going to have access somewhere in this big lot to, to Downey Point Road. Part of the, um...
I think it does.
Standards that we have to, when we approve...
Yeah.
A subdivision, which you'll see in the next subdivision one we have, is that we have to be able to say that the, the roads are in the right place and that the dwelling location is, is in accordance with the standards. And so, we have to make a determination that that's the case to here. I had asked that as a question.
Didn't you answer that question?
I, I don't believe, I don't believe those items need to be, my understanding is that those items don't need to be listed on a lot line amendment.
Okay. So when you get down to the findings that you have given us that relate to nine-point-one-point-five, nine-point-one-five, which is, that's the standard in question, you don't, you haven't listed that as not applicable or applicable? State, in the factors subject to both statutory review standards and local standards, which we have to make findings on, local standard nine-point-one-five, which deals with traffic and roads and stuff like that, is a finding that we have to make, which I think is applicable to that.
All right, well, it does say it has access to Downey Point Road, which is...
Yeah, it has access.
So it does that. The building envelope, I can understand.
It's clear, yeah.
Right.
But normally, if we were looking at a subdivision approval, we would see the access roads and we would, they would be delineated. On the one we have later on tonight, it's delineated, really. And same thing about the billable site. I'm, I'm just asking, what are we supposed to be doing on a lot line amendment? Because there are submission requirements that deal with that. And it's not, you know, I think we have to make findings, specific findings, about things that, that are required to be looked at. I don't know the answer. I'm asking.
I, I don't know the answer beyond what I've said already.
Okay.
The building envelope is listed in terms of setbacks and there is a note describing that the, uh, access will be from Downey Point Road. There is no, uh, specific location stated for the, uh, access point or for the building itself, though. And that is...
Could I ask a question? Is that not part of the building permit? Are those things not required to obtain the building permit?
The location of the building.
The location of the building is part of that, but if the, when we approve the sub, approve a subdivision, the soils testing is done ahead of time. And the, there is a recommendation as to where the billable areas are on each lot.
Right.
And then we ultimately approve that. And then when you go for your building permit, it's already been approved. Where it can be, it just has to, you know, the building inspector is, code enforcement officer is going to review all that material. And it's, all that material gets filed with, in the town with, with the subdivision map approval. That's what the process is. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that this is a big deal, I, because this is, is just a lot line amendment. What I am suggesting is that I think we should, in the future, we wanna make certain that the applications that deal with subdivisions, even if they're just lot line ones. I pulled out the amendment for, the last amendment we did prior to this was, was Cohaw Farms. And that wasn't even a lot line amendment, that was a, um, where the wetlands had been mapped. And we spent an inordinate amount of time in findings and materials that had been received and submissions, uh, in order to make those determinations. And I think that this is no different than that. I think we ought to be the same with everybody when we do these things.
So this is the format that has been used for other comparable...
Yeah.
Lot line amendments. If you go to eight-point-three-point-two, uh, there's a table, final submission plan application...
Right.
That lists everything required to be put on an application for a lot line amendment. I believe that this site plan does indeed have everything listed on that, in that table.
Well, eight-point, right.
I, can I add something?
Sure.
I will say that he indicated that the building envelope was still within the original Lot Two from the original subdivision, which was approved at one point. The, the reason that acreage is being amended is simply because they've lost the ability to use Narrows Lane. So that additional acreage is purely to get the driveway out. His intention, he tells us, is to build on that original Lot Two, within the framework and setbacks of that original Lot Two.
As close to the water as possible.
Um, he's actually not going, I don't think, as close as he can, but...
He's more about the, I think, the view than proportion.
Up and back. So my point being, this lot made it through the planning board based on a, I guess, an estimated building envelope. He tells us that it's his intention to use that. The additional acreage is purely for access. Maybe that helps.
Okay, well, I think the town planner, in talking in terms of what the, what the requirements are, that may be an oversight someplace, uh, in terms of what is required. But if, if the requirements of the submission are sufficient, um, then, you know, we can talk about, perhaps at a different time, about what we might want to do in order to see to it that the original subdivision standards are met for any amendments or lot line changes or that. And it's not clear to me that that's there. So, um, yeah, I think the point that Howard is making is a good one, but I'm not sure how applicable it is here.
Well, when we get to each of the standards, when we get to nine-point-one-five, I'll make a comment there.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions before we get to the, um, standards? Okay. And I was having trouble finding...
There is a, there is one gentleman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So, um, I'm actually wearing two hats tonight. One is, I'm Ralph Davies and I'm president of the Narrows Lane Road Association. And I'm also the, um, the Henry's neighbor. And I'm here more to gain information than anything and also to, if you threw up something that I've heard being banded about as far as, um, what these guys want to do. So I have a couple of quick questions for you. What does RP stand for?
Resource Protection, I guess.
And then CAT.
Highest Annual Time.
Highest Annual Time, sorry. Highest Annual Time.
Okay. So, um, my first question is, is the lot that's being sold next to us, is that being bought by an individual homeowner or is it being bought by a contractor? You know?
Are we required to destroy that lot personally? I didn't ask if you're from there. And does it matter?
It might be. It might matter to you guys. Might matter to you guys if I knew that, answer that question in a beneficial way.
I'm not. Would you, can you answer this?
What's the handle on each? Are you concerned about a further subdivision?
Right. Are, are we talking about one lot? Are we talking about...
So that would have to come back here anyway.
Okay.
And, and that would require a much more detail. That would be a minor subdivision and would require, if you stay along for the last one we're gonna have tonight, that's, that's a seventeen pages worth of findings.
Okay. And then, I'm just curious, with the configuration that they want, and by the way, we don't have a serious problem with it, just to set the records straight, but with the reconfiguration that they're looking for, how many houses can actually built, be built on that without them having to come back to you again? On the lot next to us, is going from two-point-two-five to six-point-two-five acres.
If you're, if you're asking how many can be built before it has to come back to the planning board, it would, I believe, be one.
Okay.
Because that would trigger a, another subdivision.
Okay. And then, uh, my next question is, on this, uh, map that we have, there's a stipulation that says, um, two-hundred-and-fifty shoreline zone, and there's a line there that abuts our property on Narrows Lane. Does that mean that any house that would be built has to be built on the other side of the two-hundred-and-fifty? Or what exactly does that mean?
The, the zone for that, for that area is shoreline residential. And there are requirements about the shoreline zoning, uh, residential zoning that require a certain number of, uh, certain things, setbacks. One of which is that nothing can be built, no house can be built in seventy-five foot zone, which is the first seventy-five feet. After that, um, you could have one house. The, the issue that I had with that question was there theoretically are two dwelling sites on parcel B now, because one was on another lot in the original subdivision and one was on the Downey Point Road side of lot, of what is now one big lot. So theoretically, there are two building sites that have been approved, but I don't, and there's much more land.
Yeah.
There's more land than is required for, uh, it's, it's one house per eighty thousand square feet. So, uh, you know, there's more land now than that. So theoretically, it could be re-subdivided, but that's, but that's not before us, so...
Okay. I'm just trying to understand, the lot next to us, which is Lot number forty-seven, I think, um, how, how close can a house be built to our property line?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five, the setback.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Twenty-five feet from the line. There'd be a setback from the line.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just, like I said, I'm just seeking clarity.
Yeah.
And then, um, I was hoping to meet the new buyers tonight, but obviously that's not gonna happen. And the last thing is, I've heard people say that, um, there's some question about whether whoever this person is that bought their property can put a dock in. And I just want to clarify once and for all, they're no longer able to access the public, not public, but the private dock that is part of the Narrows Lane Road Owners Association. And this is the main coast. People should be able to build a dock. And my wife and I have absolutely, positively no problem with them putting in a dock next to, next to us. So I just want to make sure that's crystal clear to everybody, too. Okay? But anyway...
There's a common dock for the subdivision. There's a common dock for the subdivision?
For our, for the original subdivision, there is.
But they're still part of the subdivision. They've just given up the right to access Narrows Lane.
Right, but, okay, so it's a private assoc, the Idor Dock Association is a private association within Narrows Lane. And we have the ability, as I understand it, to decide who becomes members of it and who doesn't. So I just want to make it very clear, like I said, that as far as I'm concerned, whoever buys this property should have every right in the world to put a dock in. And we're certainly not gonna push back on that, so anyway.
We really can't comment on that.
No, okay, but I'm just saying.
That's not.
I just want you to know that we're on board with that idea. We should talk, Mark.
All right.
So wait, I'm just curious. Howard, you probably know the answer there, so Matt, somebody knows it.
Well, it's complicated because of the common dock.
No, I'm, I'm asking if you, if you are part of a subdivision, but you give up your right to
Access.
access it, are you now still part of that subdivision? Interesting.
The division doesn't change.
Interesting. Thank you.
And some in the dock and wharf
Yeah, I'm not into that. I'm just one of the other parts.
Yeah, there are questions there.
Thank you.
Not tonight.
Not today.
All right, are we ready to
We're ready.
move along?
All right, let's go.
Okay. The first thing is factors, we have to make factors subject only to state statutory review standards. Title thirty, a, thirty dash A MRS, section forty-four oh four sets out the standards that the planning board must find are met in order to approve a subdivision plan. The following state standards are not applicable to the proposed elimination of lot one and amendment of lot two in the Narrows Landing subdivision. Therefore, I move that the planning board finds that the following state standards are met since they are not applicable to the application. State standard one concerning pollution, state standard three concerning municipal water supply, state standard seven municipal solid waste disposals, state standard ten financial and technical capacity, state standard eleven surface waters outstanding river segments, state standard fifteen farmland, state standard sixteen river stream or brook, and state standard twenty impact on adjoining municipality. Is there a second?
Second.
There's any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, now factors subject to both state review standards and local standards. I move the planning board finds that the following state and local standards are met since the application involves the amendment of lot lines of two existing lots in a previously approved subdivision. And therefore, these standards are not applicable to the application. State standard two sufficient water and local standard nine point six point two water supply. State standard four erosion and local standard nine point seven erosion and sedimentation control. State standard five traffic and local standard nine point one five traffic. State standard six sewage disposal and local standard nine point six point three sewage disposal. State standard eight aesthetic, cultural, and natural values and local standard nine point fourteen aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. State standard twelve groundwater and local standard nine point one one impact on groundwater, state standard thirteen flood areas and local standard nine point nine construction in the flood hazard area. State standard fourteen freshwater wetlands and local standard nine point one oh impact on wetlands. State standard seventeen storm water and local standard nine point one two storm water management. State standard eighteen spaghetti lots prohibited and local standard nine point nineteen spaghetti lots are prohibited. And state standard twenty-one land subject to liquidation harvesting and local standard nine point twenty liquidation harvesting. By the way, we have to make findings on all of them.
Every one of them.
So exciting.
Every one of them.
Okay, is there a second to that?
No, I'm not gonna say it, but I would like to comment.
Okay, well, I need a second before it's open.
A second.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to just comment on the traffic standard, local standard nine point one five. There's a page full of standards about road design, not safe access to the public on, and private, public and private roads. Doughty Point's a private road, has its own association. I thought the whole purpose of the subdivisions was to have one road in and out of a subdivision so that there aren't as many curb cuts on the feeder road, the main road. And that's part of the, what would be a discussion about, about where the road is. And also where it hits on on that lot C as compared to where other curb cuts are on on Doughty Point Road. So for example, you wouldn't want to have it right next to Narrows Lane. You wouldn't want to have it right across from Navigator's Lane. So there is an issue as to where the, the road would be out of this, these, this now big lot, especially if it is further subdivided. I guess I'm not as concerned about it now with one big lot, but it would be if we had to do a minor subdivision approval for that.
But someone's gonna come back to us, we're assuming the builder of the house submitted the application, right?
They're just gonna make it, they're gonna file for a building permit and it's gonna show up there.
But the road would be part of that, correct? They would have to say where the road is and how it affects the traffic. Is that like step two in what we're doing?
Is that something that you would be looking at too? Yeah, so it's gonna get covered.
For purposes of the motion, is this a section you would like excluded from that?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with what we've talked about. I just, I, my thought is that despite the limited number of submission requirements, and I, I probably would agree with Matt that submission's okay. We normally put a statement in these, in the subdivision stuff about submission requirements having been met. So we know it's a complete application. We would, we normally, I think, would see the original subdivision. If you look at the minor amendment that we have later on, you'll see we have all of the maps historically, the original site plan, I don't know, you know, one point zero, two point zero, you know, odd one. And that's important because then you have to, then you can check, go through the history. So it would have been helpful for this one as well. But I'm comfortable voting.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? And it is unanimous. The local standards under section nine are relevant forward to the Narrows Landing application. I move that the planning board finds that the standards under local standard nine point one are met based on the following finding. The merger of tax map forty-two lot forty-seven with portions of lot forty-eight and forty-eight dash one, the merger of a portion of tax map forty-two lot forty-eight with tax map forty-three lot one, and the division of a portion of tax map forty-two lot forty-eight dash one will create three larger lots from four smaller lots. The merged lots meet the dimensional standards for a lot in the subdivision and the division lot meets the dimensional standard for a lot. Oh. Yeah, okay. Say your second?
Check.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Local standards not applicable to the application. I move that the planning board finds that the following standards of section nine of the town subdivision ordinance are not applicable to the Narrows Landing application. Nine point four point three flexible lot size subdivisions, nine point one eight workforce housing, nine point two municipal services, nine point three preservation of the landscape, nine point four lots, nine point five land not suitable for development, nine point six required improvements, nine point eight utilities, nine point one three offshore islands, nine point one six homeowners slash landowners association, and nine point one seven community docks. Do you have a second?
I would like to say.
Okay.
But I also like to comment, this is where the section, the approval standards under nine point four would, would be applicable. Nine point four is all of the various standards that relate to determination that the lot is acceptable to subdivision, including where the location of the dwelling is gonna be. So that would be the other one that I would like to have seen more information about.
Okay.
I'm comfortable. I'm sure there's at least two sites that they can locate that do have.
So are all the lots part of the approved subdivision or some of them are not part of the subdivision, correct? Are all the lots we're looking at part of the subdivision or a couple of them? No, so that's why nine point one point six, since the lots are part of an approved subdivision, but they all aren't. Do we care? I mean, that's listed there. Again, asking the question.
I, I think our concern is the, the lot that is being combined. That's really what's happening here.
Okay.
There is some land coming into the sub, you know, into that lot. But there is also a lot line in the middle being extinguished and two lots become one. I think that's, and those are both in the subdivision. So I think that's a real concern, not where that, where other land is coming from.
Okay.
Other questions? All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Now, the, there are factor, factors subject to only standards. There are no elements of the amended plan that are subject only to local standards of approval. So for the approval of the application, conclusions of law. I move that in light of these facts with consideration to the supporting documentation in the record and that the planning board reaches the following conclusions. One, the planning board finds that the applicant's Mark Henry, the Malcolm C. Henry Family Trust, and Constance F. Henry have met the standards of the Town of Harpswell subdivision ordinance. The planning board approves the application to amend the previously approved subdivision plan for the Narrows Landing subdivision to dissolve lot one of the Narrows Landing subdivision by merging tax map forty-two lot forty-seven with portions of lot forty-eight and forty-eight dash one and by merging a portion of tax map forty-two lot forty-eight with tax map forty-three lot one subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the approval is not final until such time as the final plan has been signed by the planning board. Two, the approval is based on the revised plans of lot one and two, the third amendment to the Narrows Landing subdivision prepared by Owen Haskell, Inc., dated August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Three, this approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plan contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals, and supporting documents except the minimalist changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards is subject to review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. Is there a second? Seconded by Howard. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay. We are through. And you've given us an opportunity to talk about the kinds of things that are, that we, we are seeing more frequently. And, you know, we're always in the process of taking a look at what our ordinances look like and making sure that they mesh together. And this is just another one of those areas that we're gonna be making business for the town planner. Okay. Next item, twenty-five Steamboat Road LLC, map twenty-three lot forty-three, twenty-five Steamboat Road, Rhode Island jurisdictional review, consideration of the board's exercising jurisdiction for the review of an application to reconstruct a non-conforming structure. All right. Start with the planner and then get to you, okay?
So this application, they'll be removing a non-conforming single family home and four non-conforming sheds and replacing those structures with a single family home that is centrally located on the lot. Single family home will continue to be non-conforming in regards to the side property line boundaries, but will be less non-conforming than the current structures on the property.
I'd like to state for the record that I just learned what a spaghetti lot was. And I think I have.
Would you identify yourself?
I, I, oh, sorry, Jennifer Thomas. I am the applicant. I think I have one here. I think it's twice as long as it is wide as a spaghetti lot. I, I think that's what this is.
Yeah, it's pretty skinny.
So, yeah, the non-conforming lot, the structures have been there for a very long time. And we've tried our best to create a plan that fits within the standards. So as conforming as possible on the upper side of the lot. That's what I got for you.
And I'll, I'll address one other thing that isn't listed here. But the proposed septic design for this property shows that the disposal field is located on a neighboring parcel, which is also owned by the applicant, I believe. And the, the septic field will require an easement. And that will have to be committed to the registered deeds prior to any sort of construction activity taking place on the property in question here in the application. So that will be something handled as part of the building permit process for the structures if this is approved.
Yeah, I was wondering about that because the, Mr. Robbins, I believe, said that one of the lots was owned by Bailey Island Trust and the other one is Steamboat Lane LLC. And I was thinking, hmm.
It's complicated.
Yeah, I figured it was.
But it's all the same people.
Okay.
Yeah. And when we, when I had the pleasure of meeting you all during COVID on screen for twenty-seven Steamboat Road, we designed that septic system knowing that we would probably want to add the twenty-five Steamboat Road lot to it. And so Steve has helped me to, you know, if you add an aerator, we'll have enough space for both of them. Because of my fun spaghetti lot, it would be challenging to put there is a septic system on here, but I think it would be challenging to recreate it.
The leaking field is on that long narrow section that goes down to the water?
That's right.
Down the hill.
Right.
Yeah.
Down the hill.
Yeah.
Howard, I move that we remand to the code enforcement officer.
May I put it in more complete language?
Absolutely.
Okay. Howard moves that the planning board remands the application of twenty-five Steamboat Road LLC to reconstruct a non-conforming structure on lot forty-three and map twenty-three and will continue to be non-conforming with respect to the required property side setback to the code enforcement officer for processing. If the proposed reconstruction deviates substantially from this proposal, the town planner shall require that the revised proposal be re-reviewed by the planning board to determine if the board wants to take jurisdiction for review of this application. Is there, that meet your approval, Howard?
Absolutely.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion?
Should we be saying that what Matt suggested needed to be added? Does that have to be part of our proposal? About the permanent easement?
It's part of the code enforcement officer's responsibility.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments? And let's vote, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Enjoy your spaghetti.
Okay. Final application. Jana Purnell and William Swanson. Map 48, Lot 8, 12 Meditation Lane subdivision amendment. Consideration of an amendment to create a new lot within the plan of lots 2 for Ronald E. Barber Meditation Lane subdivision.
Okay. So this, this application will be splitting the existing property in two along the boundary of an existing stone wall. The right-of-way will be also amended to provide enough buildable space on the lot so that it meets all the standards.
Any discussion from the, from the board? Are you the, are you the owner?
I'm red, yes, red one.
Okay. Could you tell us a little bit about your rationale for this?
Sure. Land in Harpswell is expensive. And about five years ago, when we started looking around thinking that perhaps ours would make a very nice family home, and it's just the two of us, we started looking at acreage, a couple of acres. And this is the first I thought about perhaps subdividing as I started to look at the cost of, you know, what our budget could be and what the cost of two acres would cost us. I thought, well, we don't really use the back lot. And I started to research the ordinances and it looked like with some minor improvements or minor changes to the, the right-of-way, we could have a buildable lot on our own property. So that was the idea. And so that's the reason for the application.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Our first order of business is to determine the adequacy of the subdivision, of the submission. So I move that the planning board finds that the application of Gunpoint Realty Trust, including the supplemental material submitted July 15, 2019, meets the requirements of Section 8.3.2 of the subdivision ordinance for a minor subdivision and therefore is determined to be a complete application. Is there a second?
Howard had his hand up. Look at he split.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
What is the Gunpoint Trust?
That was the original.
Oh, Beck Barber's original subdivision. Okay, thank you.
I wondered where you got that.
So I, I think all in favor, did I see hands up for everyone?
I didn't.
Okay, unanimous, okay. Conformity with the approval standards. Okay, there are 21 state standards to consider. I suggest that we read the state review standards along with the town planner's findings that the standards are met, then have any discussion on specific topics. If there's an agreement among the board that the standards are met, then move to incorporate the findings of the town planner in a single motion rather than 21 separate motions.
I'm all for that. Sounds like a time saver.
Okay. Pollution. I move, the standard is met since the revised plan proposes creating two lots, each with over 80,000 feet of area. The developable area of each lot is outside of the flood hazard area. Each lot can support the subsurface wastewater disposal system and will provide for adequate waste disposal to sufficient water. The applicant proposes each lot will have a private well and a review of state well data suggests that wells in this area provide an adequate supply for a single-use resident, single-unit residential use.
I have a question on that. Where was the review of the state well data? It just says a review of the state well data, but I didn't know where. Is that something you researched for that area or?
Yeah, we have, there's a access to a database for.
I saw, I saw Mr. Temple's bill, but that was sort of listed under, that it was proof of.
That's a great question.
Adequate water, but I, I didn't think that was true.
There's, it's twofold. This was a previously approved, approved subdivision. There's existing well data and there's the new evidence from Temple Well Building.
Thank you.
Four, erosion. The proposed lot split will not require the construction of any new roads or utilities to serve the lots. As each lot is developed, an erosion and sedimentation control plan will be provided as part of the building permit application. Five. Vehicular access to the likely home sites will be by the Meditation Lane, an existing private road that is adequate to accommodate the additional traffic from one additional residential lot. Sewage disposal. The applicant has provided a letter from a licensed site evaluator indicating that subsurface water disposal systems meet state rules, meeting state rules can be installed on a new lot. Seven, municipal solid waste disposal. Also, waste will be taken to the town's recycling facility, which has adequate capacity for the waste generated by one additional house. Composting will be utilized on-site for food waste. Eight. Aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. The proposal involves dividing an existing lot in an approved subdivision into two lots, there are no known historic or archaeological resources on the lots, and there are no identified significant wildlife habitats or rare or irreplaceable natural areas on the two lots. Nine, conformity with local ordinance and plans. The two lots meet the 80,000 square foot lot size requirements for subdivision lots and meet the minimum shore frontage requirement. Ten, financial and technical capacity. The applicant has owned the lot for a number of years. There is no significant investment required by the lot split, and the subdivision plan has been prepared by a qualified party. Eleven, surface waters and outstanding river segments. Property is not located within the watershed of any pond or lake. Twelve, groundwater. Use of the two lots is limited to one-unit residential uses with minimal impact on the groundwater. Thirteen, flood areas. The lot is not in proximity to the shoreline or flood hazard zone. Fourteen, freshwater wetlands. There are no freshwater wetlands as defined in the ordinance within the two lots. River stream or bank. There are no river streams or banks within or abutting the proposed re-subdivision. Seventeen, stormwater. The creation of the. I missed 15. Farm.
There's no farm lane.
There is no farm. Okay, seventeen, stormwater. The creation of lots will not alter the existing pattern of stormwater runoff across the proposed lots. Eighteen, spaghetti lots prohibited. The lots do not have shore frontage. Nineteen, lake phosphorus concentration. The subdivision is not in the watershed of Great Pond. Twenty, impact on local municipality. The subdivision is located entirely within the Town of Harpswell. Twenty-one, land subject to liquidation harvesting. The timber on the parcel has not been recently harvested. Therefore, I move that the planning board finds that the state standards under Title 30-A MRS, Section 4404, are met, incorporating by reference the recommended findings of the town planner. Is there a second? Seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Local standards not applicable to the application. I move that the planning board finds that the following standards of Section 9 are not applicable to the application. 9.4.3 flexible lot size subdivision, 9.1.3 offshore islands, 9.1.8 working housing. Is there a second? Second. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Local standards that are applicable to the application. There are a number of local standards in Section 9. I suggest that we discuss the individual local standards along with the town planner's finding that the standards are met, then have any discussion on the specific topics. If there's agreement among the board that the standards are met, then move to incorporate the findings of the town planner again into a single motion. So, informants. The standard proposed lots in the subdivision must conform to the applicable requirements of the shoreline zoning ordinance, basic land use ordinance. There does not appear to be anything in either ordinance that is not met with a proposed subdivision. 9.2 municipal services. The one additional home that could be built in the subdivision as a result of the lot split will create an incremental impact on municipal services, but those impacts will not be unreasonable because access will be provided by existing roads. There will be minimum potential, potential impacts on the fire department. Solid waste will go to the recycling facility. The potential impact on the school system will be limited. 9.3 preservation of the landscape. Subdivision is designed to utilize the existing private roads for access to the site, minimizing soil disturbance. 9.4 lots. The ordinance requires that each lot have an area of at least 80,000 square feet and requires that each lot have minimum road fundage of 150 feet. Each lot meets this requirement. The ordinance requires shorefront lots have a minimum 150 feet of shore frontage. Neither lot is a shorefront lot. 9.5 lands not suitable for development. The two lots meet the minimum size even with the deduction of the tow road right-of-way. 9.6 required improvements. The subdivision plan shows that pins will be placed by the surveyor in accordance with these requirements. Pins meet the definition of a permanent marker in the definition addenda. 9.6.2 water supply. Water supply for each lot will be provided by an individual private well. The application contains evidence that wells in the surrounding area provide adequate water supply. 9.6.3 sewage disposal. Sewage disposal will be provided by a subsurface wastewater disposal system on each lot. 9.6.4 fire protection. Access will be via existing private roads. The addition of one home will not impact fire protection, water supply needs. 9.7 erosion and sedimentation control. The lot split by itself will not create the potential for erosion and sedimentation. 9.8.1, 9.8 utilities. There are existing utilities on Meditation Lane. These will provide service to the two lots. 9.9 construction in flood hazard areas. There is no development proposed in the flood hazard area. 9.10 impact on wetlands. The division of Lot 4 into two lots will not impact any freshwater wetlands. 9.1.1 impact on groundwater. The use of the two lots as proposed will have minimal impact on groundwater. Suitable septic soils have been identified. 9.12 stormwater management. The creation of the lots will not alter the existing pattern of stormwater runoff across the proposed lot. If development occurs, provisions for maintaining runoff under the driveways to the home sites will be necessary and will need to be addressed when building permits are issued. 9.14 aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. The proposed involves dividing an existing lot into two lots. There are no known historical or archaeological resources on the lots and no identified significant wildlife habitats or rare or irreplaceable natural areas on the two lots. 9.15 traffic. Vehicular access to the home, likely home sites will be by Meditation Lane and existing private road that is adequate. 9.16 homeowners/landowners association. It is not applicable since this is an existing subdivision. 9.17 community docks. Not applicable since this is an existing subdivision and the lots are not shorefront lots. 9.19 spaghetti lots prohibited. Standard is met because the lots are not shorefront lots. 9.20, liquidation harvesting. The parcel is currently wooded. There has been no liquidation harvesting on the proposed lots in the recent past. I move that the planning board finds that the local standards under Section 9 are met incorporating by reference the recommended findings of the town planner. Is there a second? Second.
I'll take this one.
Give it to Matt.
Yeah.
I want to be part of it, too.
Any, any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
One of the most complete applications I have seen since I've been on the planning board. All those maps and everything, it was amazing.
We had to do the conclusions of law.
Yeah. But, you know, we can say something.
Thank you, Gordon. I took a lot of time and had a lot of fun with it. I just can't believe it's a minimal subdivision. The larger ones must be a lot of fun.
You had fun.
They're a delight for everyone. Okay, I move that in light of these facts with consideration to the supporting documentation in the record that the planning board reaches the following conclusions. Planning board finds that the applicant Gunpoint Realty Trust has met the standards of the Town of Harpswell subdivision ordinance. I think we may want to, the applicant is Janelle Perrell.
Jana Perrell. She's, she's, I'm the applicant. She actually, we've shifted the ownership of the property to her name for legal purposes.
Okay. So we'll, we'll change that. The planning board finds that the applicant, Jana Perrell.
Yes, thank you.
Has met the standards of the Town of Harpswell subdivision ordinance. The planning board approves the application to re-subdivide Lot 6 into Gunpoint Cove subdivision into two lots. Two areas of common open space and to transfer a small area to an abutting property. One, the approval is not final until such time as the final plan has been signed by the planning board. Two, this approval is based on the approved plan prepared by Tidcom Associates dated January 4, 2024, and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Three, this application is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plan contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals, and supporting documents, except the minimalist changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards, is subject to review and approval by the planning board prior to implementation. May I have a second?
Just before you take a vote. I think that Gunpoint may have been a typo. I think it relates to a different area of Harpswell.
I think so, too.
So I think we should just make sure that wherever in the, in the submissions, findings, and everything that we're incorporating, that it's the owner, not the.
That the, that the owner, Jana Perrell, is the person.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you. I will bring three copies of the, the plan for signing. I don't have those tonight, but the.
Yeah, they'll, Mark, Margaret will let us sign them.
Okay, beautiful.
So you're, one of your kids? Is that what you're trying to make the back lot available?
No, no. You know, we're not far from the school. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath house. And we're just thinking that maybe it would make a nicer family home where our needs are not quite so large. So that's our current thinking. And having that backup lot then gives us a place to move to stand Harpswell, which is really what we want to do.
Sure.
Yeah. Hey, thank you all very much. I really appreciate the, the time and effort to review the application. It was quite an effort to put it together.
It shows we did a beautiful job.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm glad.
You should have been here before, when every one of those 21 standards was.
Red.
So glad we could avoid that.
It's pretty rough.
Get us all home for dinner a little early tonight, right?
There you go. All right, you're welcome.
All right. Other business, consideration of the minutes from the July 17 and August 21, 2024, meeting, meetings that were previously mailed out. Are there any additions, corrections, amendments to those minutes?
I can only comment on the 20th because I was missing from the July meeting, but I saw no errors.
Okay. If not. If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes. I, I move that the minutes be approved. Is there support? All in favor? Unanimous. All right, planning update.
Oh, yeah.
Who, me?
Finally, the fun part.
We, we will be continuing to work on the items addressed at the workshop on the, I believe it was on the fourth of this month. The, for the time being, I'm going to continue using Mark's format for these meetings with slight variations. I'm going to attempt to make a blank master copy of these so that I do not have to go find some ancient subdivision and, and go off of that and have to edit everything out of it. So for the time being, I'll be continuing Mark's process. Eventually, I would like to modify things to all of our benefit if need be, and make sure that we're all happy with the process and that it's as efficient as possible. As of right now, obviously, there's some, some issues, clerical errors and things, but hopefully those will be addressed soon.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate your having, had them ready on Friday.
Yes.
That was, that was very helpful. I mean, there's some people who are working.
Yep.
And, you know, involved in other things and-
I was on vacation. The rest of us were retired.
Yeah, but, you know, even those who are retired or still, you know, we have a lot of obligations, so it was nice to have longer to, to do that. So thank you. And thank you for sending them out, Margaret.
Just wanted to remind everybody, we have a workshop on the second of October. The second? Yeah.
Good.
It was the fourth of this month. It's the second of next month, I believe.
October 2nd.
I'll send out a reminder.
Okay, what time?
4:30.
4:30?
Oh, whatever it was last night.
Cause four was it?
Four. Yes, four.
Yeah, that's a help.
I have that on here.
Workshop at 4:00 PM on October 2nd.
I do have it.
And we have site visits coming for the next meeting yet?
Yeah. Yeah. For the next meeting so far, we'll have Irene Pelletier back with the pool. We have an application that Matt will be interested in.
Field row?
What?
Field row?
No, that's, I'll tell you about that.
Yeah, I'll go to you after.
Yeah. It's a commercial dock with a fish house on it. So there's a couple of things going on, the, the commercial dock and the fish house.
Where about?
Where the fish house?
Right next to Ash Cove Lobster.
All right.
Yeah. So that'll be coming to you. And I think there's another residential dock in the RP District. Boring.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. You're very good, Margaret.
Anything for the good of the order? Then this meeting is adjourned.